Out by that old horror tree, that's where I used to swing. Right here on this sacred ground is where I learned to sing. Over yonder past the field is where the river flows. Through this smoky mountain town and down to where Lord knows. Howl the hill, have passed by, grab your pillow, we can dance all night. Mighty fine good old time, we know how to live inside. I've got Caroline in my bones, rag top pillow, old Southwood. I'll always call this my home, my home sweet home. Some say it's just countryside and city folks can't sleep.
Councilmember Wong? Hello?
Hello?
Okay, we'll start in just a moment.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Would you do the roll call?
Mayor Hartke?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember McLeimans?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Orlando?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, City Clerk. I'll lead us in the invocation and Vice Mayor will lead us in the pledge. Please join me. What are times like these, we're grateful for the reminders that you give us about how precious and valuable life is. Thank you for the renewal of getting to do things that are different, whether it's spending time with family or learning new things. Your word says that if anyone lacks wisdom to let him ask, so Lord, we ask. We declare we need wisdom to handle the times before us, the budget sessions this week, and how to be a force of good in these uncertain times. So we ask, and we thank you for your provision. So we ask tonight for the decisions that we are making, and we thank you in advance for wisdom from above. Bless our city, bless our responders, first responders out on our streets, and all who are serving our community. And ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in reciting our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Am I on out there? Can you guys hear me in the PA system? Very good, thank you. So Council, we've got six items on an agenda and two briefing topics, but there were... Councilmember Orlando called a couple items in. Item number four, Councilmember Orlando.
Thank you, Mayor. I did talk to staff briefly today, but I still want to emphasize, this is a, my understanding from staff, this is another potential ditch issue, and I wanted to make sure that the applicant and the owners, whomever, are satisfied before we go forward with this. So I'll approve this tonight, but I hopefully get staff to come back before Thursday and let us know if there has been something that they've settled on. I definitely don't want another show as we had a few months ago.
All right. And Councilmember five, Councilmember Orlando.
And again, on this item here, I guess my question was, this is a beautiful building, the person wants to take a smaller, knock it down, and then build a larger. And my question to staff was, was there any intent to use this for some commercial enterprise? And they indicated no, like a home for, you know, agent or something like that. But that was just a, they said, no, this is just purely is for the family. And I said, okay, thank you. So we're good on that one.
All right. So Council, we have consent agenda in front of you. Entertained a motion. Councilmember McLeimans?
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 1 through 6 on tonight's meeting, April 20.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Stewart, second. Council, please vote.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you, Council. Didn't do that at the beginning, so I gotta do it twice now. Actually, I'm sorry, we actually have some briefings now, don't we? Excited about banging that camel. All right, a couple briefings. Briefing number one, discussion of the 2020-2021 budget as presented on April 9, 2020. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. With the request of Councilmember Orlando, we will discuss the budget briefing items. There were two pages that we talked about last week with individual council members and individual-type meetings. I would just want to start by saying, first of all, there's nothing in this that is, was not already covered in the Budget Workshop Number Two, or will be covered at the All-Day Budget Briefing coming this Friday. The reason for the meetings with Council was to make sure that there was a good comfort level, because we were having to republish all of our books that Dawn and her team had already put together. And with the short timeframe, just wanted to make sure that Council had a comfort level with what was being projected in terms of revenues, and then also where we could go if we needed to, if there was an emergency situation and the revenues did not come in as Dawn and them are projecting. At the budget briefings, we went over the timeframes. At that point, the All-Day Budget Briefing is scheduled for this Friday, and we will be broadcasting that for anybody that might be watching tonight, beginning at 8:15 on Friday. And then, Mayor and Council, as I pointed out, your first reading of the budget is scheduled for May 28. I point that out because, you know, there's been a lot of requests for data concerning the COVID financial impacts. And quite frankly, you all received last week in your packets the monthly projections that we had received on sales tax and the things you, on that report. And they were still good, because that was ending February. So those things run near a month and a half, two months behind in reporting. And so I just wanted to make sure that Council understood, we will not really have a great data set for a few more months. And you will only see probably your first data point, maybe, before you have to make that first vote of the budget. So just wanted to make sure that that was clearly understood. We, you know, Dawn and her team, as I relayed to you all last week, they do, every year, they do 18 months' worth of projections. When we're starting to look at preliminary revenues and preliminary everything out there, in terms of that, they work with Mike and Miranda and his team in economic development. They work with the rest of the staff, Derek Corn and his team, to come up with what we feel like are the best projections that we can for the budget, no different this year. Dawn and her team have done an excellent job, not only as we started out this budget process back in December at your budget kickoff, but most recently with the COVID impacts to our revenues. And so I really do appreciate Dawn, Matt Dunbar, and our budget staff for really going back and having to basically redo a budget that was finalized, or near finalized for a draft purpose for this Friday's presentation. Wanted to talk a little bit about our debt, our tax base. There have been a lot of discussions out there about other cities, those things that have been in the newspaper, all of us can read those articles that are out there, but our tax base is different. And so I wanted Dawn to, again, brief you all on what our tax base looks like, and then also our financial projections. And the first page of what we spoke about last week, Matt's putting there up on the screen for you to take a look at as Dawn starts to cover the financial projections.
Mayor.
Councilmember Orlando.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback before we start on this. I had some concerns the way this was done. I kept those in private, I continue to keep those in private. That's why I asked for this to come out in public and that we could discuss this here tonight. So if there are any additional questions prior to Friday's briefing, we could have the public weigh in as well, so they have another opportunity to weigh in, so.
And make sure tonight, Council, again, we're just reviewing what we talked on Thursday. Any actual budget discussions will be part of our workshop on Friday, not tonight, so. Continue.
Thank you, City Manager, thank you, Mayor and Council. So just to review what we talked about, April 9, the purpose of the whole discussion was really to communicate estimated revenue impacts as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. This is having a global impact that we have never seen before. We can, sorry, change something here. We can look at past recessions and downturns, but how this pandemic impacts the economy long-term can be quite different. We need to base our projection on current information and data about the global state and local economies, as well as markets. We are setting our projections well before the city has received actual data, as Marcia just mentioned. Transaction privilege tax, or sales tax, makes up about 51% of our general fund. And state shared revenues such as sales tax, vehicle license tax, and urban revenue sharing makes up another 29%. Reporting from these sources is often two months behind, and urban revenue sharing, which is our state income tax, is actually two years delayed. So we're going to see those impacts quite a bit further out. So it's important to realize that Chandler does have its own unique tax base. Although we often compare ourselves to other communities around us as a benchmark, it can be difficult in this situation, because we are different. We are not as reliant on tourism as many of our neighboring communities, and we maintain a transaction privilege tax on food, and that will continue, of course. Our more vulnerable tax categories include areas such as hotel motel, restaurant and bars, and amusements, where the gyms fall into, during this COVID-19 crisis. Chandler has traditionally been very conservative. We delineate between one-time and ongoing revenues, we maintain healthy reserves, and adhere to strong financial policies. The last quarter of fiscal year 2019-20 and the first quarter of 2020-21's proposed budget has been updated with revised three-month revenue impacts, and a six- and nine-month projection is developed. This was accomplished by removing many planned new positions and removing or reducing new operations and maintenance, and adjusting general employee merits and markets. Additionally, measures such as no travel, holding vacant positions, strategically prioritizing capital projects, and deferring fleet replacements are in place to minimize the impacts to revenues. We're doing our best to address reductions through the proposed budget versus implementing mid-year reductions, but depending on how long this COVID-19 crisis goes, we have begun to identify potential service reductions for the future as well. So the screen before you, I think they're going to bring it up here in just a moment, is showing our projections. We have estimated the 2019-20 impact to be 10.5 million. And really, that's due to the fact that, for the last quarter, with the delay like Marcia had mentioned and I just explained, we don't foresee that first quarter, or that final quarter of 1920 to be as large. But when we move into the first quarter of 2020-21, the impact for July through September is going to be slightly greater, and we're estimating about 20 million based on review of various line items within our general fund. And I am just speaking of general fund. These lower revenues have been incorporated into the proposed budget, as well as the corresponding expenditure reductions. This represents about 11.7% reduction from March to September compared to what our forecast said prior to COVID-19, or 30.5 million less. Should this extend to December, we're estimating another 20 million, and then another $15 million reduction through March, as we would assume the economy would be in the process of rebounding. The next part of the impact summary reflects the forecasted total for general fund of 261.3 million.
Of Mayor.
Which is now set.
Councilmember Orlando.
Whoops.
Don, before you leave that little chart there.
Yes.
Under the FY 1920, you have 10.5 million shortfall. How are we covering that?
Through the Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, we are currently in a position in 1920 of our revenues coming in over our projections. So we're about 13.6 million over our projection. So this is actually a reduction to what we didn't expect initially. Although we had already adjusted our forecast and started preparing next year's budget on that higher amount, we ended up having to kind of backtrack, pull that back out, and adjust accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're good on that, bottom line, we're good on that.
Yes, yes, sir. Okay, so on that second chart, really that gets into the numbers of what we're comparing against to come up with these percentage reductions. And as I mentioned, our total forecasted revenue before COVID impact was incorporated was about 261.3 million. And of course, now that's been reduced, because this is based on the proposed budget, beginning July, Jan, July 1 of 2020, reduced that full 20 million. Out of that total, the portion of the revenues that are collected that support ongoing personnel and operations and maintenance were projected at 219.1 million. That's the portion that we want to make sure we continue to bring in. And this has been reduced to 214.7 million, or 4.7 million less, in our projected budget. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and turn this back over to the City Manager to explain how the reductions were achieved.
So Mayor, real quick.
Councilmember Orlando.
Thank you, Mayor. So on the right-hand chart on this, we're talking about ongoing dollars, only about five, little less than $5 million reduction.
Through the Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, that's correct.
Great, okay, and we'll step into those, so, okay.
Yes.
4.7, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dawn. So at the bottom of this sheet that you all received, there are some things that we have done to reduce expenditures in the proposed budget. And then, as Dawn mentioned, there have also been things that I've put in place to help minimize and generate one-time savings that we're doing currently. So I'll run through those real quick, if you have a question. So first, the general merits of our general employees and the market adjustments have been adjusted as part of the proposed budget. We can talk about those on Friday as well. The association contracts that you all approved in January remain intact in the proposed budget, no changes to that. We have changed the vacancy savings rate from 1.5% to 2.5%, and that is going to be accomplished by holding positions currently and into next fiscal year. We did remove or reduce many of the decision packages, and there is a chart in your proposed budget, draft budget that you received, that shows exactly which ones of those were reduced or eliminated based on the COVID reductions. So if you have a chance to look at that before Friday, they're there, and we can certainly talk about those then. We have new and carry-forward capital has been removed or shifted to other funding sources. The council budget amendment reserves were removed. And then we have other contingencies and reserves that have been adjusted in order to make the proposed budget balance, both ongoing and one-time.
Mayor.
Councilmember Orlando.
Thank you, before we leave this. So all these appropriated reductions, these are staff recommendations to Council?
That is correct, through the draft budget.
And vacancy savings rate, does that include police officers and firefighters?
It includes everyone in the general fund, yes.
Do we have a number of, and if you had that, I looked at the budget book today, do we have a number of vacancies for police and fire that we could share with the Council?
Yes, we do. But if you'll remember from the Budget Workshop Number Two, council members, we're not looking to hold sworn positions as part, to make up that vacancy savings rate. I'm not looking to hold sworn positions for that. But I can provide you that information.
Provide those numbers, so we know what exactly police and fire we're looking at there.
Did you have another question, Councilmember?
No, you'll go over the details of each of these on Friday, right?
Correct.
Yes.
As part of the all-day presentation.
But the key here on, for the general merits and the market adjustment, those were adjusted downward, I'm assuming?
Yes, Councilmember. We had had some early discussions at the first part of the year about what I was going to propose as part of the draft budget. Market adjustments have been removed from your draft budget that you have today, and merits have been reduced from that original number that I had briefed all of you on earlier. Yes.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And again, that's just general employees.
Right, understand.
As far as expenditures, to generate one-time savings, already in place, I have holding all travel and training until the end of the calendar year. So we will be doing that. Holding vacant positions, and I will caveat this again, as I did last week with everyone, there are going to be a few positions that we have to fill. So by holding positions doesn't necessarily mean you will never see a job posting. We have, for instance, a building official position, he has already announced his retirement. By the code, we have to have that position, because they have some specific authority in the code. And so positions like that, along with warrants, all of those will be taken on a case-by-case basis, just want to caveat that. Also, we're strategically prioritizing capital projects, deferring our fleet replacements, as Dawn mentioned a while ago, and scrutinizing all purchases that are being made. And we're setting up processes to make sure that that occurs at the department level, so, on that. The last thing that I just want to make sure that everyone understands is that, back on the merit and market discussion, I did say that I would, if revenues do come in differently than what we're expecting, I will be coming to you all to ask permission for possibly a one-time market adjustment for general employees. I just want to make sure that that's out in the front.
Mayor.
Councilmember.
I understand what you just said, but are you talking about just a one-time dollar and not ongoing for the next year, year after?
That would be a discussion we would have later into the next fiscal year with the Council.
Okay, I just want to make sure the expectations are clear. I mean, this could either be a one-time check, or it could be an ongoing, one-time funding, right?
That is correct, Councilmember Orlando, but it is more difficult, as everyone knows, to come up with the ongoing dollar, so we'll have to look at that and be making a recommendation to you all if the revenues were to come in differently than the projections today.
Okay, thank you, thanks, Mayor.
All right. Unless somebody else has a question on this page, we'll go to the capital project sheet.
Council? Continue.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Matt Dunbar.
All right, and Matt, will you do like we did last week and start at the bottom? All right, so there are many millions of dollars in the capital program that we will go over each individual project come Friday. I want to make sure that everyone completely understands, especially our public that might be watching, there have been only two changes that were made to the capital projects since your second Budget Workshop, which all of you were provided a full copy of every capital project. Those two are, first of all, Mayor and Council did request that we move up the Veterans Memorial, Phase Two, to this next fiscal year, which was done, and that is in next year's budget. We have also made a change at the request of Judge Fuller for some security fence enhancements at the courts, and that was also moved out of Year Two into Year One, both cash-funded projects, and we'll talk about those in a minute. But other than that, every other project remains just as you saw it in your second Budget Workshop. So I'll start with that. You know, as we are looking at what I'm calling the Capital Project A and B list, when we started at the budget kickoff, there was definitely CIP guidelines that we talked about with Council. Those included maintaining the existing infrastructure, finishing our planned construction of parks in our southeast arterial street system, limiting new projects that add ongoing and maintenance, and those that address public needs. So that was what you saw at the budget kickoff. This list that is before you, and we talked about last week, is strictly general fund This list that is before you and we talked about last week is strictly general fund cash-funded projects. Everything else, again, remains the same. This is strictly cash-funded. So if a project's not showing here, it's only because it's paid out of a different funding source, and there are many that we'll talk about on Friday. So what I wanted to show by the A, B list, and considering these were all cash-funded projects, you can see there at the bottom, the ground total of 16.9 million dollars that we have currently in the budget proposed for cash-funded general fund projects. Or that includes other funds as well. The 14.7 is the general fund portion, I apologize for that. The next two columns are what I'm calling a priority A and a priority B, and I have had consultation with all the directors that this involves, and we've gone through these projects. But what I wanted to show the council last week is that we have about 8.2 million dollars of that 14.7 that, from a staff standpoint, yes, are they important projects? Without doubt, they are all important projects, but they are projects that we could hold if the funding does not come in, the revenues do not come in. So just to get a little bit more security around what happens if things don't come in as we have projected to date. So with that, again, there's 8.2 million we could, 6.5 that could go forward. Again, this is not a very distinct line. It is only a line that, working with the directors, I feel like is at least reasonable as we go into this. So we can go back to the top of the list at this point. Thank you, Matt. And start with community services. So community services has a number of things. You will notice the ones on the priority A column are things that are maintaining existing facilities, which was one of the council goals for the CIP. Priority B is things that could wait another six months or so. And that was kind of what we talked about internally, is things that we could possibly wait on about six months and then see how revenues come in and then move forward if it looks like that the revenues are going to be there. The first of which is the fitness equipment at Tumbleweed, the replacement of that, put in priority B, and as well as the Veterans Memorial Park Phase Two. Didn't feel like six months was probably a deal killer in terms of, we had moved it into year one anyway. But nonetheless, that is one and it does have, it is all general fund cash. The park's central irrigation system is on its last leg, I'll be honest, and so we would like to go ahead and get that moving because that is definitely something that impacts our maintenance of our parks. For cultural development, Center for the Arts improvements, we did push our share of that out, keeping in mind that is in conjunction with the Chandler Unified School District. And talking to Kim and Michelle felt like that that was good, that they could wait till the last half of the year to take a look at that. Downtown redevelopment, downtown maintenance is something that is ongoing, continual, so that half a million was left, in my thoughts, as a priority A. For fire, rebuilding Fire Station Number Two is certainly important. Even getting this design money found and into the budget for this next year was quite a feat in itself, but certainly that could wait till the second half of the year to make sure that funds are there because we would also have the option, possibly, if council had directed to look at a bond committee, that project could go to bonds if absolutely necessary, if cash is not there for that project. General fund, general government, the existing building repairs and renovations on all of our 65, 67 facilities, 1.1 million doesn't even get us a drop in the bucket anyway. That number is many more millions higher than that in terms of need, but nonetheless, we'll talk about this on Friday, but definitely we need to move forward with that. Security cameras and the police court's security fencing upgrades, again, those are something that I feel like we could hold off until the second half of the year. Many of those things have been in place for years. It is just something we would like to enhance security to help our staff feel more comfortable in some of their workspaces. Energy management system upgrades, facility and parks asphalt repairs, and community center and senior center building renovations, again, those are all maintaining our current facilities and are highly important. The second phase of the building assessment can obviously wait till the second half of the year unless council feels differently. For IT, did talk to Sandeep about where we were with IT cash-funded projects. For ITOC projects, we kind of split the middle of that because some of that is folks that he hires to keep projects moving along. The rest could probably wait till the last half of the year. Our voice and data convergence, this is something for police department, that is the last department to finalize this converging, or convergence over to the new system for voice and data. We'd like to get that done. Our infrastructure monitoring system, again, year one. Wi-Fi access points, we kind of split that over the ones that are hanging by a thread, literally, and the ones that we could wait possibly till the last half of the year. Citywide technology infrastructure, I don't know when anything has ever pointed out the need for that more than the last month has. We would like to move fast as possible on some of those things. And then the mobility pilot, which we have, it seems kind of a bit laughable at this point, but anyway, second half of the year, though, they still have some money left in that current capital project account. For police, body worn cameras, that contract expires in December, so that will have to be addressed by four then. Radio communication equipment, did talk to the chief, feel like we can wait till the second half of the year if necessary for that. Streets and traffic, there are a number of these that streets has currently funds still remaining this year in a number of these projects. So John and I walked through all of these and you can see there the list of what we felt like were things that really needed to move, including streetlight addition and repairs, and LED streetlight upgrades from our council subcommittee. That is a cost savings if we can get those implemented sooner than later. Also, the street sweeper replacements is part of the Clean Air Act requirements of our air quality mitigation in the valley, and we need to get those street sweepers replaced. And traffic management system fiber replacement is highly important. Again, the rest of those are things we feel like could wait if need be, only if the revenues don't come in possibly till the second half of the year. And mayor and council, that was our briefing from last week, unless there's a question.
Council, any questions?
Yeah, mayor.
Councilmember Orlando.
Thank you, mayor. So I'll go bottom to top, I guess, and we'll talk more about these on Friday, but this ADA upgrade looks like hot asphalt patch repairs. Is that a truck? That's all that is?
That would be correct, councilmember.
Okay, so we're just basically the loaders and the truck, we don't need those right now. Be nice to get a new one, but their old one, we're patching together with duct tape and we're okay with that.
They will continue to service for six more months, even though they are very much in need of replacement.
Okay, all right. Yeah, the ADA upgrades, we could talk more about that on Friday, I'm a little concerned about that. I mean, I know what the details are, I don't want to go into that right now, but we could definitely talk a little more on Friday.
In the short answer, councilmember, is we do have several hundred thousand dollars still remaining in that capital project, and so they still have money to last through the fall for projects that come up there.
So radio com, I'm going to talk a little about that on Friday as well, so, and I, again, we'll get the details on that, so I'm not going into detail. And of course, the Veterans Memorial Phase Two, we could talk a little bit more about it on Friday as well, but it seems like a reasonable, you know, list.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rowe.
Mayor, thank you. I never know when I'm supposed to get these words in at the right time, and so I have to share a little bit along the way. I hope that these numbers are this good, but I believe that we are being far too optimistic. I think we're in real trouble for a year. And when I, I noticed already that capital improvements are higher than they were last year, and maybe I misread the book, but it looks like we plan on spending more next year than we did in this previous year.
Yes.
Is that true?
Mayor, councilmember Rowe, yes, most of those increases are in utility funds, so they're in water, wastewater, those funds, that, where we need some very expensive repairs to our plants and our pipes and things like that around the city. That's where the increased cost is coming from primarily.
So the other thing, mayor, my apologies, but I'm going to cover a few of these things. Veterans Memorial Park, I don't think we should be doing any new construction on any park.
So councilmember, this is, these are the kind of conversations that we'll share for, wait for Friday?
Well, I hope that we will have these conversations in earnest on Friday.
I trust that you will lead us in that discussion on Friday.
Well, very good, because there's a number of items here, so.
Yeah.
There you go, thank you.
Council, any others related to this?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Our next briefing is Matt Burdick on our Chandler communication plan related to COVID-19.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for a few minutes to brief you on our current communications activities. So we have three objectives guiding our current communication activities. First, being a conduit of information. We continue to reinforce the public health information and recommendations that are coming out from our public health officials nationally in Arizona as well as in the county. Continue to monitor and share executive orders and news that's being released by the governor's office. Connecting people and businesses with resources and services, and addressing a number of COVID-related inquiries via web, phone, email, and social media. Our COVID webpage has been up since March 11th. It's already the third highest viewed page on our entire site. We have over 35,000 visits to that page. Our social media outreach as well, in the past five to six weeks, has approximately 465,000 views that we've reached through all the different COVIDs. So there's definitely a lot of interest in getting information related to COVID and how it's impacting our city. In addition to that, I know many of you have received calls and emails and such. I've got hundreds of different calls and emails that have come in over the past five to six weeks. Second objective is to implement public information campaigns that support city services. Recently, you've probably seen, we're producing virtual experiences with departments and promoting outdoor activities that residents can enjoy at home or while practicing social distancing. Continue to promote the safety and availability of our water through this pandemic. Educating residents about the damage that could be caused to wastewater infrastructure and their own pipes when people flush materials that are not biodegradable. And continuing to publicize the U.S. Census and encouraging resident participation as an essential part of ensuring Chandler receives its fair share of federal resources. And then our third objective is demonstrating the city's plan and community response for COVID-19. Communicating the operational status of city facilities and services, that's one of the common questions we get of people inquiring about the status of services and facilities. Promoting the availability of online services and resources for people to obtain city services. Sharing stories about the ways businesses and nonprofits in the city are supporting the community during this public health emergency. And lastly, we'll have more discussion on this on Thursday, developing a communications plan and materials to support the reestablishment of facilities, programs, and services. Always in the midst of a pandemic like this or a public health emergency, you're always planning for the end or the conclusion, and so from a communications standpoint, that's what we're working on to help support departments when we get to that point, that we're ready and to implement the communication elements to support the reestablishment of those services and facilities. That, I'll take any questions.
I know, council, we're going to have a very robust conversation and dialogue, both with our, is our county health director, is she able to come?
Mayor, we're still waiting to, for a firm confirmation on who might be representing the county at this point.
Great, so we will have folks here planning, to have folks here from the county that will be able to ask questions at that level, as well as look at a number of things related to both what the president, the governor, and how do those interact with our plans and things that we can open. Now, some of those things can probably go like this, and some of those, obviously, where there are staffing, and perhaps some setup would take a little bit longer. But I'm very excited about this. I think we will be one of the first cities, if not the first, to actually roll out a plan that certainly does not have dates, but in terms of the discussion on how are we opening the city based upon the information of the states, the county and the president. So I apologize now, Thursday is going to be a long, long day, starting earlier, since we moved the exec session from Wednesday to Thursday, with also some other items, exec session, work sessions, council, and then this, but then we'll come back all day Friday. So everyone should be a little burned out of discussing numbers and discussing COVID and everything else by the end of this time. Any questions for Matt? Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you, mayor. Matt, thank you very much. You guys are doing a great job. I'm interested in a couple of things. You're doing some social listening. What are you hearing out there in general? What are some of the key topics or keywords that you're seeing? And then a follow-up question to that, can you do a survey, MailChimp or an online survey to find out what people are longing for, what kind of information they need that we can start getting out? And then I also want to know how they think we're doing as it relates to our communication.
Okay. So your first question, yes, we are, you know, obviously monitoring various inquiries and things that are coming in. Some of the more recent things that we've seen end of last week and then today, obviously, is focused on people trying to connect with resources. So some of that is individuals looking at assistance of ways that they can connect from an unemployment perspective. Some of it is businesses looking for resources, small businesses looking for resources to connect. So we're helping to connect them with the appropriate resources and provide them links that they can access information. We are, have seen an uptick of questions of, both on social media and to the mayor and council office, people inquiring about the status of various city services and facilities, and wondering about businesses and when things can reopen and things of that nature, in light of some of the direction from the governor's executive orders. So we have seen an uptick of inquiries related to that. And then to your second question in terms of poll, we have the ability on our website to do some polling, so we could ask and solicit both through our website and social media or do a survey and see what questions and what information people are looking for, so we can certainly do that in preparation for this.
Great, I'd love to see a 180 on how they think we're doing.
Okay, absolutely.
Council, any other questions for Matt? Councilmember Rowe.
Yeah, thanks again, Matt. Good conversation with you earlier, but I did, I do want to ask about public service announcements or resources for people, the general public. We're, you know, doing, we're managing the city, of course, we have good management and all that, but what about PSAs for domestic violence or suicide, mental health issues? I mean, I have heard recently that that's a genuine concern. We've got some call increases in public safety regarding that, so are we doing something?
So we'll partner with the police department, really take their lead and determine if there's a need for our assistance to be able to put more information out. I know we worked with our public works folks earlier, that was one of their concerns that they had about the wastewater infrastructure, and that's how that campaign came about. So we'll follow up with the police chief and see what additional assistance. Certainly, that's a situation that they're monitoring very closely, and if there's a need for some communication support from our office, we'll be happy to assist in whatever capacity they need to, for crime convention, domestic violence, suicide, things of those very serious nature.
Yeah, is that the type of thing we can get into our web pages, so when people are scouring through?
Absolutely. We would probably, because the police department has their own web presence, we would probably partner with the police department because that's a source where they would have, if we had anything on the main city site, it would probably link to resources or content that police department offers. So links basically back to their site.
Yeah, and I'm also talking about probably videos for Channel 11.
Yep, absolutely.
People do watch it, probably more than ever right now, so.
I'll follow up with the police chief and gauge his need, and if there's things that we can support him on, we'll absolutely do that.
Thank you, man.
You're welcome.
Councilmember McLemmons.
Yeah, one other thing, too, so as the crisis was unfolding, the healthcare crisis, I felt like mayor and council, we did a measured job of following the facts and making our decisions based on the facts. But after reaching out to the community, some people in the community, some of the feedback I received is maybe we weren't getting the messaging out. And, but, you look at, you know, we're doing all these things, and so I don't know where that disconnect is. But one of the things I talked to a few on council about, just a different idea, trying something different, is perhaps maybe like a teletown hall where you can dial out 100,000 citizens, just something different, and see what that's like, and maybe do that after we've made our plan, so we can really dig into the data and see what that's like, how we get the message to the masses as a consideration.
Absolutely.
Something to think about.
We've actually talked to our information technology department about our current capabilities, and they're actually working on some other things that would allow us to expand and do exactly what you're talking about, some of those teletown halls.
And be clear, like, there's different variations, and it would be cool to do it from a visual standpoint, like if you did it in a Zoom or WebEx. But what I'm talking about, probably the simplest way, is the phone. And I know that seems old school, but you can reach a lot of people on the phone in a short period of time. And so if you're just looking at all those options, it'd be something I'd love to see if mayor and council, something we can consider to try, to get our message out once we got our plan in place, and how we came about that plan, so the community's all on the same page. Because there's so much dissemination of data. Because there's so much dissemination of data, every day you read through social media, and everybody's all over the fence. At least, I think it'd be important for people to know how we came up with our plan.
Yep, absolutely. So I'll follow up with Sundip, and we can explore those different options. I think when I've talked with him, we've looked at both phone and video conferencing capabilities, be able to share that, but that would be a great tool to be able to educate people about what the next steps are as we look to reestablish certain facilities and services. Happy to assist on that.
I do know, no matter what we do, that I'd been dialoguing with someone who emailed me and is convinced that since, they've only read of one COVID case in Chandler, so that because of that, there's no point in us doing anything. And so I, again, I know that we put links to where other information is, and I think we try hard, and I do know, no matter what we do, that we're just not going to catch everyone, so it's, we, I'd say, anything that we can do to get the information out, and I know we've had conversations about this telephone conference or teleconference already, and we're looking forward to participate in that, and perhaps that will reach a new swath of people that we can, that we can hopefully educate, as well as just bring some comfort or information to them.
Absolutely. We'll explore, like I say, we'll explore those options, mayor and council.
It may be an outright failure, but I'm always of the mindset, fail forward. If it doesn't work, okay, we won't do that again, maybe we'll do something different. So if that's a path that the mayor and council is interested in, that's awesome, but...
But we can certainly do that, and that would be one of a multitude of options of ways that we can share that information. Certainly, we'll still use our digital sources as well, but that's another platform that we could explore to be able to get that message out about what Chandler's plans are moving forward.
Mayor. Councilmember Orlando.
So Matt, can you give us a little more detail how we reach out to some of the entities in Chandler, the school district, DCCP, Chamber, all the other, I mean, we can start naming all the other entities?
Yep.
Major employers, how do we reach out to them?
So we certainly don't reinvent the wheel. We have a lot of established relationships with the various city staff, working closely. So the school district, for example, we work really closely with, I work really closely with my counterpart, Terry Locke, but we have ongoing relationships from a city staff standpoint. You mentioned the Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Chandler Community Partnerships, we have staff that is that liaison role, so we work directly with them. Our economic development team works very specifically with the Chamber of Commerce. John Owens and our Culture Development Department worked closely with the Downtown Chandler Community Partnership. Our Neighborhood Resources folks work with a nonprofit, so we leverage those existing relationships and interactions that people have to be able to touch base and see how they're doing, see where their needs are throughout this whole process.
So how does that feedback get to you, and how does it get out there from our city standpoint?
Well, from my standpoint, I look and see what information needs to be communicated. Where is there a gap of information? Is there any misinformation that we need to get information to address? From their standpoint, in terms of day-to-day interaction, they would work in terms of how do we partner as a city and as that other organization to be able to address whatever challenges they're facing. But from my standpoint, I look and see what communication support and what information needs to be disseminated in support of those operational objectives.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Okay. Council, any additional questions? All right, this concludes our council meeting. Now we have a study session. Council, these, all these items will be voted on on Thursday, as well as we will have a briefing on Thursday as well. Again, have a few items that have been called in for comment or questions, so we'll go into those. Item number seven, councilmember Orlando.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, Mayor, I was transitioning here. Hey, I just want to publicly say to staff, the council, P and Z, they did an outstanding job in turning, let's start it as a good project. This is a, two buildings, two where they originally called it warehouse, and now they're more focused on a multi-business or multi-entity. But this is exactly the vision we wanted to see when we sat down a year ago, on what we want to see transition from just a four boxes, you know, four walls, a couple of windows. This is a beautiful project. I'm looking forward to more of these projects. So staff, P and Z, please keep up the great work in ensuring we get these good projects, and we're proud of these projects. And I know councilmember Rowe and I shared the same meeting with this developer, and we played a great tag team, at least that one day, I'm sure the rest of you guys did as well, but he came back with windows and designs, so that this could eventually be more than just a warehouse in the future. This could be really a two-story office complex, so kudos, and just keep up this type of work. This is quality.
So was councilmember Rowe, former policeman, was he the good cop or bad cop with this conversation?
You know, I can't imagine him ever being a bad cop. I mean, he just, I was the bad cop, he was the nice guy, and trying to make everything...
All right. Item number 12, councilmember Orlando.
I got this answered earlier. The question to staff was this lowest bid or best value, and, or I believe it's a different term we use, but again, it's not just this lowest bid. They had a selection panel, they came out on top, not only in the, in the selection criteria, they also came out on top with the bid, so that's a good project, and we look forward to that moving forward.
All right. Item number 25, councilmember Orlando.
I believe councilmember, or Vice Mayor Rowe and I chatted a little bit about this, I mean, sorry, Vice Mayor Lopez, chatted a little about this earlier. I think we're having a briefing on this.
Mayor, that's correct. There were a number of you actually that had requested this item, so I'm going to hand it over to Dawn.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm giving credit where credit's due.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm going to ask Danielle Wells, our Revenue and Tax Manager, to come forward to present on the liquor license process in this specific situation.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'd like to provide some information on item number 25, Series 6 bar liquor license for El Nuevo Coyote. What we do is we receive liquor license applications from the Arizona Department of Revenue, or, excuse me, the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control. We, the city as the local governing body, can provide a recommendation on the applicant's personal qualifications and to the location. If we've already reviewed the location for its previous use as a transferable license, which in this particular case it is, a Series 6, we can't look at the location, we can only look at the qualifications of the applicant. So in this particular case, the applicant bears the responsibility to provide, to prove that they're reliable, qualified, capable, and the best interest of the community will be served by the issuance of this license. In the process, we post a copy of the liquor license application on the premises for 21 days and solicit for residents that are living within or own property within a mile radius to weigh in for or against the application. In this case, nothing was received. We also work with development services to determine if a use permit, an entertainment use permit, is required, and in this case, there was not. We also solicit to the police department for a recommendation, and in this case, the recommendation came back as denied. Chief Duggan will be able to speak to that a little bit more in detail on that. So what we do is we gather all the input from the departments, and then we prepare our memo to council. We can recommend approval or disapproval. If an approval is recommended, the Arizona Liquor Board would consider our recommendation, and then any other protests against the application, okay? If a disapproval is recommended, a hearing will be held with the Arizona Liquor Board, where we would be able to support our recommendation, and they would also consider any other protests against the liquor license application. And in this particular case, the liquor, Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control will be protesting as well. This is rare that we do a disapproval, but we would be able to provide them documentation and feedback on what we, why we are recommending disapproval. Liquor Board would then grant or deny the liquor license application after hearing our arguments. If it's denied, the applicant would then be available to have appeal rights. If after all the appeal rights are exhausted and it is denied, the applicant in this case would not be able to hold or apply for liquor license for a year anywhere. With that, do you have any questions that I can clarify before I turn it over to you?
So on the first part, because I know I've had conversation with neighbors about this place that have sought me out, but how does the word get out for people to make comments? Your first, your first part of the community intervention piece there?
We post a physical application on the premises, and they are of the ability to come out and look, and then provide their recommendation, or their argument for or against, and that would be submitted to our city clerk's office.
So most likely, most people didn't know or don't know on this process that they have an opportunity to comment positive or negative on this, if it's just on the physical premises?
It could be, but it could be that particular case, but they would still, you know, have the ability to look. We don't actually mail out mailings to the, every applicant within a mile radius. They just have the opportunity to look for it on the premises, correct?
So, yeah, so that's, I mean, that, I mean, we do liquor licenses all the time, and that seems like just a, it does not seem a robust opportunity to get comments, positive or negative, if people, one, don't know that a liquor license is up, or two, that they have an opportunity to input. So I, is this, this is pretty standard practice with every city? It's prescribed by the state?
The Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control guidelines.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Rowe.
Thank you, Mayor. So given that process, at some point, the city could change and do something more robust, as far as...
Good, we could. We could work with liquor, Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control to make sure we're in their guidelines as well, and add some additional solicitation for that, yeah.
Okay, and then the other question I had is that we received an email from someone that suggested that they are a new owner of this facility? How does that work with what we're doing tonight?
Is it a different owner than the applicant that's requested this license today?
I'm sorry.
It was Alejandro, and then Sean.
If, Mayor, because liquor license hearings, and we're the recommending body, if I may, Mayor, the State Department of Liquor Licenses is the one that actually issues or denies the license. We make the recommendations. But because you're going to have an applicant here on Thursday, and they're going to have the opportunity to address you, and they have some due process rights, I'm going to recommend that the specific questions, that we hold those until Monday when the applicant is here and can address those.
Till Thursday.
Or Thursday, I apologize. Yes, Thursday.
Okay, okay. Do you have any more in the vice?
No. I'll be happy to.
Okay, vice.
So I'm basically, it's part of our process, that this is basically going to action, so we're, we'll have our debate and discussion then. So that's when we get the presentation from the chief, or will he present today?
Mayor, if I may, Vice Mayor, you can have the full presentation on Thursday. I would recommend we do that when the applicant is available to hear that presentation. They'll have a right to address the council as well.
I'm good with that. Thank you.
And Mayor, we...
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so for that meeting, I'd love to see some data on the, like, in front of me, if there's been calls, if there's been complaints, and what other licenses we've not recommended, maybe for the past 10 years in Arizona, if we can just go back and dig that up.
City manager.
So Mayor, councilmember Stewart, the chief is prepared fully to give you that information. Based on what the city attorney just said, might suggest if y'all want to, to pull this item to action, so we can have the full presentation with the applicant here on Thursday, but that's only a recommendation.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking this might go to action, but I thought there would be some merit in talking this, but maybe I'll just, I'll just pull this.
Yeah, I'd, Mayor, I'd like to have it pulled.
All right, so let's just plan on pulling it then. So, all right, we will complete this discussion on Thursday. Councilmember Stewart.
Great, well, and the applicant will be in attendance?
Correct.
At the podium, so we can...
Yes.
Okay, great.
All right. All right. Councilmember Orlando, since we're pulling this, I think that's kind of makes this part moot. Your next call-in was item number 26.
I'm good on that, Mayor, and...
27?
27, just want to give a little kudos, we got some, we got $69,000 for our airport, and he's going to put that to good use, is what I was told today, so, thank you.
All right. Council, any other questions or comments about our agenda on Thursday? All right, seeing none. Checking my list twice. All right, that so concludes our study session.